...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I roll call, please?
Clapp?
Here.
Bedrock?
I just want to let you know, council member Bedrock contacted me on Friday, indicated that he would not be able to attend this evening's meeting, but he did give me some information and comments that I'll share regarding the budget discussions.
Melby?
Here.
Jurdie?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Okay, regular agenda, we're having discussion requests, funds for organizations, and also discussion for preliminary tax levy. So I guess I'll put it in Corky's court.
Okay, we did put on the agenda each of the items for which we've had a request. I do want to let you know that the Golden Link request has been changed and that's because of my inability to find the original request. Councilman Melby had talked about a $90,000 request, I do actually have it at $91,980. In the email that was originally sent to Ryan, the finance director, myself, for some reason that line, city of Crookston, did not show. So we contacted the Golden Link and got additional information, and that's the number that they are requesting. And we can deal with these as a group, or we can deal with them alternately. What I can tell you is that they have made that request, and that is up from $78,000, which they have received, I'm going to say for at least two years, if not more. One of the reasons stated for the additional request is that they now pay for snow removal, which they did not pay for in the past because the city did it. The impact on the budget would be to raise that percentage for this request would be approximately 3.5 percent. Each 1 percent that the budget levy is increased is equal to approximately $25,233. Twenty-three, $25,233.84. Questions? Comments?
On the Golden Link there, what, they haven't had a raise in how long, you said a couple of years?
You know, I haven't been a part of that, but I know for at least two years.
I think it's been five.
Liaison, council member Melby may have some info on that.
I think they said it was five years, that there hasn't been an increase on that. And, you know, basically, they tried to do more fundraising, they tried to do, you know, doing more with the meals and that type of thing. The, it's not only just the snow removal, it's also the garbage collection, it's the other utilities like we're experiencing with our, you know, budget. It doesn't include really any, any frivolous things, it's, it's more or less to help make the budget meet. So what they, they do know that if they don't get the entirety of that, you know, that'll either cutting down some programs, or going out and doing more fundraising, hoping for, you know, that type of thing to increase, I mean, that's how you get it. They are starting, I think it's the first of October coming up here, that the meals are going to go up some, I'm not going to say what, because they haven't hammered it down for sure, I don't know. But the meals are going to go up, and the price of membership dues is going to go up. So they are looking at raising, you know, some of their own. The trouble, like I said, though, is that there hasn't been a movement in the last five years. So, I mean, if it had been going up 2 percent or whatever, like the rest of these funds, they would be right at that 91,000, something like that.
So Wayne, I don't know if you know this, now, what is their total budget?
What's this right here? I believe it is 299,000.
Seven hundred and fifty-six.
Two, so, okay, we're...
That, ours would, if this contribution were made, that would be approximately 30 percent, approximately.
And then, the other revenue sources that they have is all fundraising, is that, am I correct on that?
Well, they've got donations, they've got fundraisers, they've gotten some grants, they get some memorials, then, you know, they do have their sales of beverages and food, and they do like recycling cards, the senior meals, they make a little bit on the trips that they have out there, and that's pretty much, that's pretty much...
So has their, has their fundraising, how, what's the trend of their fundraising the past few years, has it been going up, down, or staying flat?
The fundraising itself, it's gone up when they have a project, you know, like that freezer that they talked to us about, helping out, so they went out and, and they fundraised for the freezer, and got some grants, you know, so, I mean, it's, it's not that they aren't trying to do some of that. This is going to be, you know, this is mainly for day-to-day operations, as far as the janitor, the utilities, that type of thing. And then, what they're fundraising, that's where they can add on, or do a, they do some different community things, like have a speaker come in, and, you know, types of things, entertainment that they would have. So they would be cutting back on that, and trying to raise more donations and things like that, to fund those things. This is for the basics of, to keep the place going, they've doing a lot of remodeling, they've had to do some updates with their kitchen, and some power and stuff like that, but...
So, I mean, the only thing that gets me a little bit squeamish is when I've talked to them, and they came in here and did their presentation, they do accept, you know, they have a, I don't remember what the gentleman said, how many members out, do you know, outside the city of Crookston, that, you know, our tax dollars would possibly, I guess you could say, support, but, I mean, it's, I, I, I remember it not being as much as initially I was thinking.
No, there's probably, I think there was like 25 to 30 folks that, from outside, you know, say like from Euclid, or that type of thing, and...
So that actually brings in money more than takes out, right?
Right, it, it, yes. And they encourage these folks that if they're coming in to use the facility, to become members of the facility.
Right.
What's their meal-wise, since they've gone public with that, that must be a little increase, how long has that been open?
Well, it's been open for a few months now, but it's, it's kind of a tough deal to figure out, I mean, you have to really sit down, and I haven't done that entirely, because you're, you know, the salaries are going up, you know, you got a janitor that comes in for a couple more hours. That's what I told them, that they have to go back and try to make those things be self-sustaining. Because if you're going to add to the mix, you're going to have to make it, get covered by the charges. So the only thing where they've also gotten into a little bit more, is they got, with the Legion and the VFW closing, now when they have their meetings, they have them down there, and so they got a janitor that cleans up after them, and it's, you know, so it's, they don't really make enough off of those meetings to cover some of the stuff they do, you know, like I say, the janitor, the tissue, the, you know, all the amenities that they used down there at that time, but, but it's a great place for those guys to meet again now, since they don't have their own rooms, clubrooms. And so, like, and they serve the free meal on the veterans on Memorial Day, they do, you know, they've taken those kinds of things over from what the Legion and the vets used to do. So there are a few more expenses on there. We could have got into it and really dug down, but, I mean, it's, it's, like I say, that's, that's not my job.
But it's only been three, three, four months?
Yeah, it hasn't been that long, so you're not going to see the whole shooting match.
Seems like there's a heck of a crowd down there now at lunch, I mean, car-wise, and I don't know.
I guess, I look at it as, you know, this council, and previous councils, always has made a comment that, you know, we support, you know, not only our youth in activities, but we also support our seniors. So we got to find a way to, you know, increase their, what they're asking, I guess, and, you know, and now that if the Legion and the VFW are holding meetings, I feel our vets are very important to this community, too, so...
It is our only, you know, thing for the older people that we really put on, I mean, we have stuff at the CSC once in a while, but, I mean, you just look at the people that go down there, I've stopped there a couple times, and, you know, I guess our elderly, you know, constituents, a place to go, and if they play cards, I mean, there's, there's somewhere for them to go, I guess, is what, you know, we, don't we own the building?
I don't believe so.
No, we do not own the building.
It's the...
We used to, I think we did.
I think perhaps some decades ago.
Yeah, I know, I didn't get, she wasn't there, so I couldn't get the history part of it, that they've got back when, I know it was, oh gosh, who was it, Little Snyder, Bill Keewell, and June Schaefer, that crew, that kind of put this together and got it going, so that's, that tells you the age of it. And I think it opened, they said, in 87. And so that, they got their bylaw, that's when their bylaws were stamped, and it was from 87, I believe. And they have about, they gave me a little write-up to here, they have about 300 paid members, provide service for our, service and food for our members. Our kitchen is licensed and inspected by the state, and they do have a liquor license for beer and wine. We have two paid positions using city funds, a manager and a janitor. They have a full-time cook and three part-time positions paid for through food sales, and the assistant cook, dishwasher, and waitress. We have about 18 committees, a grant committee, and their grant committee has done very well over the last few years. It's tougher and tougher getting grants, because you got to be able to match that 50/50 when you're doing it, things aren't cheap. Their mission statement, as I said, is to provide a place for adults 55 plus to gather, be inspired, and to enjoy life, that was their, their whole thing, and like I said, like Dale said, that the, they took it through the park board, saying, well, we got to do something for our, our senior citizens, if we're going to be doing it for our youth, and this was kind of the answer, and that's kind of where we're at. They have a place to meet, they have a place to play cards, they have a place to have a lunch, a lot of them, you know, would be having to take home-delivered meals, I would guess, if they couldn't, but here they get a chance to get out and visit and, and do that. They have some card-playing, canasta, that type of thing, you can learn how to play smear, or pinochle, or cribbage, and they even offer free guitar lessons, so they're not making money on these, it's all free stuff, just to let you know.
So do we need a motion on each of these line items, or how do you, how do we want to proceed?
I think that you want to address each of them individually.
Do you need a consensus or a motion?
I think you would want a motion.
I make a motion to approve the 91,000, what is it total?
$980.
91,980, and add that to our overall budget?
And I can, as we get to item 3.02 tonight, I can tell you the impact that will have.
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Got it, first and second, thank you, further discussion?
I would just like to make sure that they are being sustainable, so like reviewing their food costs, and make sure that they're at least breaking even, I think is an important piece, and I think it's important that we're supporting them, but also making sure that it's not just a random number, and that they're actually just being sustainable on those things.
I agree, I agree with Christie, maybe...
Excuse me, there has been an increase in people attending that place every day, if you want to drive by there at certain hours, there's a lot more people there than there has ever been, so, it's moving, they're moving ahead, but they need to keep moving ahead, so...
Just better business acumen, is all I'm asking.
Right, I guess if they could have a tighter, you know, budget line item, something for...
Yeah, I mean, it's like we've all been asking of all of our departments to, to increase the fees, make sure we're not doing stuff that cause, costs us money, you know, instead of like breaking even, I don't know if they're, you know, we can't run their business for them, but we can ask to say, hey, you know, if you're doing these activities, maybe you can figure out a way to just break even if you're losing money, I don't know.
And I think one of the things is, and I don't know if it's good or bad, that I'm on that board down, so I have weighed in on the business end of it there, as far as having to increase your, or your, you know, your prices, and, and being more accountable to it, and also, you know, the council does want to, or the city does want to keep funding it, but they got to know what it's going to, and it's got to be known that it's run properly and all that good stuff.
So I have a, I have a question, I mean, we're donating, or not donating, but we're sticking a considerable amount of money, is this, is this something that we should have a, I mean, I know Wayne is down there, but I don't think you have to be as, as a city person, but should we have a city board member, like a...
A liaison to the board.
I am the liaison from here, and I am a board member.
But it's, it's not really directed, is it, it's just, you just are doing it, correct?
No, 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 he is actually a liaison designated by the city to work with the Golden Link.
Okay, so like if Wayne is off the board, then somebody would be directed to be a liaison, so...
If some, if Wayne were not a council member, another council member would be the liaison.
So who was before you?
I don't know that they had that.
There was really, we'd never had it before.
Okay, so this is new?
It is new, so it is going to be a mayor appointment from...
Okay, that's what I was asking, I didn't think it was...
No.
Okay.
Wayne was willing, since he's a member of the Golden Link, to step up, and we asked if he'd be a liaison to the board, he agreed, and so...
Perfect, I, yeah, I think it's something we should do going forward, so, yeah.
Any other discussion? Have the vote, Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jurdie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
And I do want to indicate, in councilman Bedrock's email to me, he would recommend Golden Link for being one that he would favor.
Okay, motion carries, let's move on.
The Tri-Valley Opportunity Council, they are asking for funding for their Tri-Valley bus, they do have six routes in Crookston, they are obviously employing six individuals, they run routes from 5:00 in the morning till later at night, they are attempting to procure additional buses, this is not the entire sum for the Transportation Department budget, and it is consistent with, I believe, what was asked for in the past.
I think it's a good, that's the word I'm looking for, a good source for our community that can't ride the bus, or don't have vehicle transportation.
Generally don't have a cab system at all in Crookston.
Right, don't have any transportation outside.
I think it's a great thing in the summer, too, for the kids, they'll pick them up when their parents are at work, and they'll bring them out to the ball fields for their stuff, and make sure that they make it home, and, and that also helps on, on that end of things, too, so...
Second by Pat, to Joe for that, for kids to just get on from...
You can buy a pass, yep.
They even do it for this, excuse me, they even take kids to school and pick up.
Do, motion? Make a motion.
Is it for the $14,500?
Joe made the motion, thank you.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Clayton, thank you, further discussion?
What's their, I mean, you said you're looking at more buses and whatever, what, what's your timeframe on that?
I don't know the particular timeframe, but I do know that they've had difficulty procuring new buses, so at some point, and it may be continuing, they're having to rent buses, so they're trying to get them as soon as they can.
Well, I do drive the bus down there, and they've gotten, I think, one or two new ones, but they're, you know, they run, like you said, six of them a day here for shift, and that's not, that's not counting the ones that are going out of town to Fargo and to Menomone, or, you know, other places that they go to, Red Lake Falls. I mean, you don't go a day without, when you're driving, that people don't go, I don't know what we would do if we didn't have the bus. And you're taking a lot of folks to the, to the hospitals and the clinic, and they subsidize it through the clinic and the hospital, which is a great deal, they help them a lot, and so, I mean, it, this 14 is a drop in the bucket for what it cost them to run that thing and for replacing, so, I mean...
Just maintenance alone, I mean, I can't even cover that.
No, no, I don't, I mean, I don't know where they got that number, but if that's the number they need, that's pretty cheap for us to get involved and say that we are part of that system.
Further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Clapp?
Aye.
Mel, excuse me, Melby?
Aye.
Jurdie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
I do want to indicate again, consistent with councilmember Bedrock's email to me, that he would recommend the passage of the Tri-Valley bus request.
Okay, motion carries, moving on.
DCDP, Your Honor, we, I have presented to you a memo that we received from the DCDP regarding their requests. If you recall, last time, at our last meeting, there was a general request from the DCDP, but no breakdown. I did speak with one of their members after the council meeting, and asked them to prioritize their requests if they were not allotted the entire sum, and you have that in front of you. Their proposed activities, as well as the prioritization of those activities and those requests.
What's there on the restoration enhancement of, you know, signs on what buildings?
There was no specificity, councilmember Erickson, as to what buildings, what they would say, other than that they are asking for that sum for those, as well as additional $2,100 for historic building signage.
I do know, in the past, they've actually designated, because like even I think the Halloween thing had like a historic signage on some of the buildings where the candy was, in the past, so they have some pretty extensive research on the historical pieces of those buildings downtown, so...
I was looking at the annual, you know, Chalk It Up Art Fest, you know, and then 5,000 to hire an artist, can't they get some finance, or some grant money, or free money through the legacy dollars, you know, ain't that, that the voters of Minnesota passed years ago?
It's possible they could request that, doesn't mean they automatically get that amount of money.
I think just based on what I'm seeing here, and like what they'd like to, like what their top priorities are, I've seen a lot of really good turnout for the Tuesday nights in, on the, in the summertime. I do love the idea of being able to like recognize the historical signages of our buildings downtown, and I think that's another good way of increasing traffic. I don't know how comfortable I would be with maybe doing the $8,000, but maybe like if we did the top three for 15,900, that would give them like at least a boost, I don't think we supported them at all last year, but I think these would be really good, a good step in the right direction for the, the work they have been doing.
That is correct, councilmember Jurdie, there was no support given last year, I believe that requests were handled differently last year, I believe those were determined by the city administrator at that time, so that's the difference, but there was nothing given last year for the DCDP.
When was the last time that we, uh, supported the...
I don't know the last time that they were actually supported with funds from the city directly.
I think when that was started is when it was financed, that first year.
Steve, didn't they have a manager for that?
Yeah, they had part-time director, I guess you want to call it.
Director, yeah.
But that was supposed to be self-sufficient over a couple of years, too, where they're going to get, but, I mean, I agree with Christie at a certain point, but I think 8,000, you know, we cut that down to 4,000, benches downtown, I think look nice, I see people using them. The other thing I agree with is the waste receptacles downtown, you know, cut that in half to 2,500, just to get more of them downtown, because having a store downtown, there's garbage flying all over, and I think you had more of those, more people would be apt to use them. As far as, I don't know, signage, I guess, I don't know, I think, I just look at it, it's, it's great, but I'd like to see them maybe do a grant for that instead, try to get some, you know, some other way to fund that, in my opinion. I do like the Tuesday tunes, I think that draws people out. To me, the 5,000 is well-spent, I think, because it's been packed down there every time they've done it.
So which ones were you looking at, Steve?
I like number one, Tuesday tunes, and some benches, maybe cut them, I don't know how many, they're getting for eight grand, but maybe cut them in half this year, just because it is a tight year.
And under their proposed budget, that would be matching, they would be trying to raise 16,000 for their, for their benches.
Those benches they put are in parks downtown, aren't they, some of them, like the Mayor's Park?
Yeah.
And that, so couldn't they go through Park and Rec and try to get that grant? There's $5,000 there of matching funds.
I think they did, didn't they do that last year?
I don't know.
I thought that they, they didn't do a...
No, I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Wasn't those benches that the Mayor Park put in by service group?
I thought it was Rotary, wasn't it?
Rotary, yeah.
Rotary, yeah.
But I mean, even, for downtown benches, I mean, we still got cost, even on our side for, you know, the concrete and putting them in, and I'm not sure what that all details.
I guess my other concern, similarly to that, is if we do put more receptacles, like who's emptying them, like how often?
Well, I know the city, on, I'm not sure what day of the week, they go around and empty the downtown garbage receptacle.
So it'd just be more time on there, and more manpower?
So, yeah, that adds, adds more man-hours to the city crew for doing that, right?
Well, you can pick it up there, or you can pick it up off the curb. Right.
Yeah.
I think it's just, it's just more talking through that, it's not just this, it is this plus the manpower.
Was that 5,000 for that two of matching, Corky?
For the Tuesday tunes?
No, for the 5,000 receptacles, so they were going to do 10,000?
No, I don't believe so.
No, I think that was just...
I don't believe so.
I feel like on there, this one just says matching, and this one doesn't. I mean, I guess the other thing, too, is like, if we're doing this based on what we like, that's great, if we're picking and choosing, but like this is their priority list, too, so do we give any consideration to what they see as a priority?
So what you're saying is, we could give them 20,000 and let them play with it whether we want?
Well, I, I mean, like, I just added the top three, and the top three are 15,900. So do we just address, we just, I would like to see that it's like actually allocated to something, and not just thrown out there.
That, that is your prerogative, you can do as, in the past, a block grant, they use it for whatever they want, or you could prioritize, and say, we will grant you X amount for this project, Y amount for that project, that's certainly within your prerogative.
Did Amy give them some money last year?
No.
The 5,000?
No.
I thought she had some.
You did not give any last year.
Maybe it was Shannon, because one of them had two there, had a couple of years.
I want to let you know, I have heard that you gave them no money last year.
No, but over the last couple of years, or then maybe, but, yeah. I know when they first started, I know we gave them money.
Yeah, yes.
And we lumped some, and they did what they wanted, but we never got a report back what it was.
Do we go through these lists and get a consensus, and then vote on how much we're going to give them, I mean...
Well, I guess, feeding off Christie's comment, you know, they listed them in order of what they'd like to see, but I'm even looking at the restoration enhancement, historic advertising... but I'm even looking at the restoration enhancement historic advertising signs on the building. I mean, you can give them eighty-eight hundred, but I would almost like to see what the sign brings something to us and show us what the signs look like or what are they doing.
I think, I think it could be something where we're allocating the money and then it's like kind of in tandem with our, a department or us on how that looks, so it's a joint effort. I don't think that's a bad idea. And then we can release funds once we have the proofs and things that we'd like to see.
So possibly, if you made, got them into the budget this year and told them to show us at the end of the year what they did with that money, that would go a long ways if you're gonna grant them money again the next budget cycle.
I think.
So I mean, I'd like to see them be able to do what they want to do on here. And if they're listening or whatever, they could hear kind of what are, we thought, or what, you know, would be the priorities. Like I say, I don't know that historical, you know, advertising signs and stuff, don't they have to have permission? And don't they have to get, you know, there's a lot to that, to put signs on a building.
Yeah, I think they've actually been working with this Historical Society, if I'm not correct. Don, do you recall? I know that they've been working with some.
They've been working on that, but they don't have a, you know, a really solid idea yet. There've been.
Years ago, I was brought to the planning commission about signs and how to do it downtown and what they were gonna do. And the planning commission was waiting for just what you asked of what they're gonna look like. How are they gonna go about, what is the rules and regulations behind it? And nothing. So that is something that I think that we would, we would have to have to.
Right.
What does the council feel on the fifteen, twenty, ten? What do you think?
I mean, if you did the first three that they have prioritized, it's fifteen-nine.
Yeah. Somebody mentioned twenty.
And as I have said on each one, remember, this adds to what you were re-authorizing for a levy, and that's what you should be deciding, just understand that.
Well, what's gonna happen here is we're approving these and then we're gonna get to the end of the night with the levy number, and then we're gonna be asking our departments to cut.
Right.
Yeah.
Nothing on here is a necessity for, you know, for them to run, you know? And we had said before when they first started that you come to us with a project, we'll try fund it or help fund it, you know? And that's kind of where we left it at. And I said forty thousand or fifteen-nine or whatever, it's still, that's a percent of levy right there.
Yeah, that's a lot of money.
The other thing I think we need as a city, you know, than signage on a building.
We asked our departments to cut back on their wants as much as they possibly can. And I'm looking at this list here, it's, to me, it's a lot of wants, not, not needs.
There's no need on there.
I mean, I, the, the first two was, I mean, I look at the Golden Lake, from my, from my eyes, it's, it's, it's kind of a need. We need to do that for our elderly, for the community. And the Tri-Valley bus thing, that's something we need to do for our community as well. So I, I mean, I'm getting into the DCP and I'm looking at, you know, you know, which isn't in the top three, but purchasing the, um, the games, the cement games for.
Chalk it up, chalk it up.
No, the.
Just the cement games.
Cement game tables to enhance downtown core.
Yeah. So I, I don't know, I'm.
The one I, the one I look at is the number one is the festival. I think that's a great thing, because it brings people downtown, it brings people walking around. I think that's really the only one that I agree with. If we were to give them anything, I would go with the five thousand dollars for that, just because it's a community event. A lot of people enjoy it, brings people downtown, stores could feed off of that. I mean, it's a, it's actually bringing, bringing something.
And that's their number one.
Yeah.
So if you're gonna do it, might as well do their number one.
Along your St. Lions there, Joe, is the, um, the Chalk It Up Festival. I mean, that could bring people to town and generate some.
I think the difference, though, is that the Tuesday night is like multiple Tuesdays over the summer versus Chalk It Up's one event.
Yeah, Chalk It Up was sponsored by the Rotary this year, so they gave seven hundred dollars to.
The five thousand dollars goes right out of town, too, that's my thing. You hire an artist, come in, boom, it's gone, they're gone for five thousand dollars. They're not returning investment into the community whatsoever, that's my problem with that one.
Yeah, well, on the Tuesday night, they also have, like, it's kind of like a little bit of a farmer's market kind of vendor thing and music and food. And I think when we can have those festivals in the summertime and bring people downtown, I think it's a good draw. I think that's ultimately what the DCDP is about, right? Is bringing that traffic downtown, bringing business downtown. And if it's their number one, and if we're gonna choose, pick and choose here, go with what they find to be a priority as well.
Yeah.
I would support that, I mean, like I said.
I agree, I just, I seen, I seen how good it was.
Make a motion, we do the five thousand dollars this year and.
For the Tuesday night tune, Summer Music Festival Series?
Yes.
Got a motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Joe, thank you. Any further discussion?
I still think, you know, to tell them that, you know, if you got a project that's really important, that's really gonna benefit the community, come to us. I mean, that way we, you know, maybe we can look at it, instead of throwing it out there, yeah, here's twenty grand, do what you want with it. If they got a good project, they did their homework, they bring it to us, I mean, that's when we make a decision, say, oh, that sounds pretty good.
Well, maybe even two and three, like if you actually have a more developed project, because I think we all have a lot of questions still about what this actually means, then we can reconsider that at a later date.
There's a question here, whatever happened with the bridge lights?
They were not funded.
They were not funded.
Correct.
I couldn't remember what happened with that, but.
And I think there became more to that than just putting lights. There's a lot of stuff with DOT and things, a lot of red tape that wasn't necessarily addressed initially.
By them, too, are they back to the drawing board on that?
That was in their initial proposal, was the lights as well.
I think there was a lot of things, even if it was a go, I think there was a lot of things our IT had to do, too.
Yeah.
And.
And with the railroad.
Can we, can we call for the question?
Yeah.
Call for the question.
So, Your Honor, I have Councilmember Steve Erickson for a sec, first, and then Councilmember Joe Cressel for five thousand dollars to the DCDP.
For Tuesday tunes.
Yeah, so that was a specific condition, yes.
Um, Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jurdie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
The next one is the SBDC, Your Honor.
Okay.
It's a request consistent with last year's request for ten thousand dollars for the small business development center. That is located on, in the VTP, Valley Tech Park. And this provides services for businesses in the area. We are one of two entities that support it in terms of cash dollar amounts. East Grand Forks and Crookston support it. We, in addition, give rent-free for the SBDC at the Valley Tech Park. Based upon the last cash lease that we executed, four hundred dollars a month, that would be worth about forty-eight hundred dollars in value. We don't give that money, that is the value that is available to the SBDC. They are all supported, also supported by the University of Minnesota, Crookston. For those of you on the CETA board, they made a presentation to us. I'm gonna say approximately six weeks ago to eight weeks ago, documenting the value that SBDC brings to the area and brings to our city. And you are supplied materials documenting what they believe they bring to the community.
But it's, um, they, they service a bunch of different communities, but they're not getting supported financially by all, none of them, probably about two?
My recollection of the budget and information we were given is East Grand Forks and the City of Crookston support them with direct cash payments. I did, I do believe, if I remember correctly, I asked at that presentation if you needed to pay to get services. No, you do not. I asked if a member were to withdraw their support, would they still receive services? And the answer was yes.
Wasn't that one that we dropped? Wasn't it twenty grand they got to one point?
I think they did receive at one point twenty thousand dollars from the City of Crookston. I can't tell you when that ended.
They were supposed to make themselves sufficient over three years, too.
Right.
I mean, I also think that this, this, this request shouldn't be something the taxpayers of Crookston should have to pay for. If we did do a donation, I feel it's more in CETA's wheelhouse to make a donation other than the City of Crookston.
I agree.
I also really struggle with Thief River not supporting this at all, because I know there's a lot of business and a lot of support that's gone that way. And it just, it, it's hard to feel like they're just reliant on what we're giving and that they're not being as proactive as they could be and looking for other donations.
We certainly could move this off and deny the request here, but return it to CETA for consideration. It is in the Valley Tech Park, it is in economic development, and the services provided involve business plans.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll second it. Motion, um.
I understood the motion to be deny the request, but refer it to CETA for action at its next meeting.
Okay. Got a motion by Don, a second by Clayton. Further discussion?
I did, we talked about, but, you know, if, if we're gonna, Thief River doesn't pay a dime and they get businesses, the business get brought to Thief River, we're paying Thief River to economic development. I just really struggle with that.
They should piece them back together.
Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jurdie?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Cressel?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Ooh, Scruffy Tails, all right.
The next one is Scruffy Tails, Your Honor, formerly known as the Polk County Humane Society. Scruffy Tails exists here in the City of Crookston. I do have information pursuant to your request at the last council meeting. I did contact Scruffy Tails, and I spoke with their manager. She indicated to me that they do have one other contract other than with the City of Crookston. That's Marshall County. They do have a contract, and they do receive a monthly payment from Marshall County. But unlike Crookston, they do not have reserved kennels. If you remember correctly, Crookston Police Department has a contract, well, the City of Crookston, but the Police Department has a contract, we pay a certain amount per month, and we have five kennels specifically reserved, and we then pay a daily fee if we bring in animals. Marshall County does have a monthly contract, they do pay a daily fee when they bring animals, but the manager indicated rarely does Marshall County bring animals. She indicated Polk County does not pay anything. They less than rarely receive animals, and they only take them in very, very, she said, like very five times unusual circumstances. And when Polk County does bring animals, they do not pay anything.
So where do the animals go? I can't believe that Polk County has less issues with animals than the City of Crookston.
Well.
I just.
Don't know.
Just curious.
You just said they rarely, rarely, rarely.
My, my other, my other thing, my other thought on this is like, if they're asking for ten thousand dollars, why don't they give us a further severe discount when it comes to our other budget with the Police Department and holding animals if this is a need?
And the need, they want to replace and repair kennels. They did specify that, they need some kennel replacement, not just because of us, but generally speaking. They do rely on donations and grants, and they are soliciting, as you might expect, donations and grants.
Is there some way to make this a matching?
You can do whatever you want.
I guess I would just, I would like to see in good faith that they're trying to find other grants or other things, and that it's just not reliant upon us, and because we also are paying them to do this other service for us. And I know that they've received some grants and funding recently, too. So I'd really like to see this be like something that's matched, if nothing else.
You know, the city, though, we, we get their services and we pay for them. But I don't know that we're in a position to make donations to help them out. We're in tough shape right now with what our budget's gonna be.
Well, this is essentially a request for a donation.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. It's more of a donation than a, you know, and there's many service clubs and that that are always looking for something to do that they could probably work that out.
And we have increased the rate per month significantly. And we have also increased our daily rate percentage-wise significantly. And absent dollars, it's not huge, but we, we did enter into a contract with increased monthly rate and increased daily rate.
So have we received a copy of what their amount of money or income into that, funds, grants, their budget?
We have none.
That would also be of interest. That would be of interest.
Yeah, what their budget is and, because I know years ago, they would have fundraisers and different things like that, and then they would receive some grants. So I guess I'd like to see a budget of some type.
Is that privately owned or no? Since they changed the name, who owns it?
Must be a nonprofit.
I think it's a nonprofit with a board.
Private nonprofit entity.
Darren, have we ever had a problem where we didn't have room, they didn't have room for a stray animal? Hate to put you in a spot, but you may, may not know that, but.
You know, occasionally, we have, you know, we've walked into some weekends where we've been full, and they said they might have some difficulties taking some animals. But overall, we've been able to work it out with them where we've had kennels available. So like Administrator Reynolds said, we buy five kennels a month, if you wanna call that, and additional kennels would be made available. They have pop-up kennels that they could put in their garage if needed. But yeah, we, other than that, that's about it.
I was curious, we're getting our money's worth, so to speak.
Karen, do you know of anywhere else Polk County is putting their animals besides here?
You know, I don't think that they do the enforcement like we do as much, you know? I don't know with East Grand Forks, I'm sure they work something out with them, the other smaller cities in the county. Yeah, I just really don't know. I know they don't deal with dangerous animals or anything as much as we do either. We've kind of advised or helped them on some of those cases in the past. But like Corky said, we're probably doubled our budget and expenses with the new contract and everything that we would be. You know, it was a hundred dollars a month that went up, but the daily rate, if you remember, went from four to we're being charged eighteen, we're charging the public twenty. But I mean.
We were at two fifty a month, and I believe it was three fifty a month for our five kennels. We went from four dollars a day to eighteen dollars a day for each animal we bring in.
So we were currently spending anywhere roughly five to six thousand a year. We will, in excess of, you know, ten thousand, probably this year. We budgeted ten thousand from all the audits and everything, we could make best guess. But it's, the last two months have been roughly twenty-five hundred to two thousand a month. Now, this is our busiest month, so we're obviously, when the cold weather gets, you know, it'll slow down. But it's definitely a service we need, it's definitely a service that's important, but, yeah.
That's, I guess my concern is I don't want to see it go away, but at the end of the day, if they already have a budget and they're running off it, this is a gift, and I don't think this is a year to give a gift.
Tabled? I'd like to see a budget. I'll make that table, table.
I'd rather make a motion to decline.
You can ask for a motion that's been made to support, then you have to ask for a second.
Second.
Okay, for the ten thousand dollars?
Could we put a stipulation in wanting to see what the budget's looking like, so we have a more educated decision going forward?
Put in whatever stipulation you want.
I mean, like, the other thing, too, is I wonder if, like, ultimately, if they need this ten thousand and one dollars, I would be more likely to do a matching of five, and then they have to fundraise the other five or something like that. But before I said anything, I'd like to see what they are getting and what their budget looks like on a yearly basis.
I don't think it's been run better now than it ever has.
Absolutely.
For sure, because they've never been in here, and their presentation was good. I mean, I think they're on the right path, but this is just bad timing.
Yeah.
So you just said that there was a motion by a Councilmember Briggs and seconded by Cavalier for the ten thousand and one dollars?
No, mine was to table it.
To deny.
So to table it.
Table.
No, he said to table it.
I asked you, you want to table it?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, great.
So you understand what that means, it can be brought back at any. So you understand what that means, it can be brought back at any time.
And we'd like just some more information on the operating budget.
I'd like to, I'd like to have some more information from the police department to talk to Chief of Police in the future. Not right now, it's okay.
Okay, I got a motion to table it by Clayton and Don, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Wellness in the Woods. Moving on.
Wellness in the Woods.
I'm sorry, one, one other question on that, to table it, it's, it's, it can't get put into this year's budget anymore now.
Cannot.
So it's.
It's out of this year's budget, but it's, the request is tabled, it could be brought up by any one of you to remove it from the table and consider it, but it would have to fall into a different category to see if we have funds and under what department or how we would handle that.
But doesn't it have to be tabled to a specific date or with the, more information brought forward, or what's the conditions on that?
Well, it's, it's just tabled, that means it just sits there until called forward. If you wanna make, amend the motion to say a specific date, we can do that.
I just, I thought you had to give a specific date when you table something.
Well, usually.
Or else it gets brought up at the next meeting and the next meeting and the next meeting.
And it brought back in two weeks.
Well, could we also, the stipulation of knowing what their operating budget is?
If you tabled it, we can bring it up at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, if we, and we can get a budget, see if they have one, I'm sure they do.
Okay.
I will, I will contact them.
Okay, questions asked? Moving on.
Wellness in the Woods is a mental health provider. What it is, is an organization, a private nonprofit organization that provides over-the-telephone or internet FaceTime access for individuals to contact licensed counselors, mental health professionals, to discuss their issues and problems. It is free, there is no charge. Similar services are provided by Aluma in Crookston, but Wellness in the Woods is based out of, I believe, central Minnesota. I wanna say Eagle Bend, I'm not sure, but the individual I spoke with previously worked for Aluma here in Crookston, and he has asked for five thousand dollars to help with marketing of their services. They have the services to provide, they have the people to provide it, but they need marketing, they need to get their availability out into the public.
I just think with Aluma providing a lot of the same services, and also with mental health being such a hot button topic, there's so many grants and things out there, and for this dollar amount, and already knowing that we've already pushed ourselves to probably four percent at this point, five percent, I just don't feel comfortable funding this.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
I make a motion, we decline this one, Your Honor.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Delain, a second by Steve, further discussion?
Well, isn't Northwest Mental Health set up similar to that?
That is Aluma.
Aluma, that's their new name.
Yes, Northwest Mental Health has changed its name to Aluma.
And not knowing where its budget's from, where do they get their budget, I mean, there's too much information out there we don't know, maybe next year to look at it and come back with some information.
Sounds good.
Roll call, please.
Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on.
Oxcart Day Festival has requested the sum of six thousand dollars, undesigned it, to be able to use it for the purposes that they need, including all that they do in, in terms of marketing, getting people here, those type of activities.
I guess, I guess I don't like the idea of it being undesigned, like, we're kinda, to be true to the rest of these ones, we, we kinda made some stipulations that, you know, I think Christie made a comment saying, you know, we wanted, we wanted to go for specific things, and Steve made a comment earlier about, you know, um, I don't know where I was going with this, but she said something to the fact that, oh, bring it, bring, bring your ideas in, your wants in, and if we can support them at the time, then we can, I think that's how we should handle.
Well, in the past, you know, we've always given six thousand, but that was for the fireworks, and I, I agree that I don't like just to give them six grand and use wherever.
I would be more in favor of it if it was for the fireworks.
I, I would, I would be, I would be very disappointed if, like, we gave them the six grand and then they just decided not to have the fireworks, and then we're like, well, you know, where'd that money go to? Because I think the fireworks are an awesome thing for our city, and.
I think every resident gets, could take part of it, that's the thing.
Right.
So I, I would make a motion that we give six thousand dollars if it was used for the fireworks.
I think they should come back.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Thoughts?
You think it should what?
I think if they want six grand, they, I think we deny it, they should come back.
Yeah.
And ask for donation of six grand for fireworks.
Or can we just say it's allocated to fireworks?
I mean.
But this way, this, this way, it's in our budget now.
Right, right, because if it doesn't do.
Preparing for it, we know.
Don't you have a?
Listen, if they come to us later and it's not in our budget, we're gonna give it for fireworks, right?
Who's, who's making the motion, or has someone made a motion yet?
I have Councilmember Clapp making the motion for six thousand dollars to donate for fireworks to Oxcart.
Okay, I got one.
I will second that.
And a second by Christie.
I guess if they don't use it for fireworks, they don't get it, I mean, it's that simple.
I'll get about that.
I think it's a, city's kind of our duty to give something to that festival because it is a, a big thing, biggest thing for Crookston.
But historically, that's what we've given it for, so we'd like to continue on that, because we see that it is, as Steve said, something that everybody can participate in.
Okay, motion by Delain, second by Christie, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Clapp?
Aye.
Melby?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Item three point zero two is discussion on preliminary tax levy.
You got the numbers cranked up, Corky?
I sure do, just give me, have me to add up and make changes because of what you've generously done. Yeah, I just gotta.
Back up to twenty-two percent.
Okay. So, just to give you a history, as you know, I'll make it brief. We originally started out at thirty-seven point five. In our presentation last council meeting, we were able to tell you that we had pared that to a twenty-five percent levy increase. Consistent with your instructions, I have, as well as Ryan, have met with department heads as a group, department heads individually, and we have defined for them, pursuant to your instructions, to delineate and differentiate between wants and needs. And I will tell you that your department heads went about that task very professionally, they went about that very diligently, and they were able to identify a number of items in the capital improvement plans that we removed from next year's capital improvement plans. After doing that, we got the levy, proposed levy down to eighteen point eight-three percent. Now, one of the things I do want to share with you is that, and I wanna be very clear with you and as well as the citizens of our community, a levy increase of eighteen point eight-three-five percent does not mean a tax increase of eighteen point eight-three-five percent. This is somewhat complicated, but I'll try to make it as simple as, as I can. The percentage is applied to your city's tax capacity. That's the value of your homes in your community. And the values of the homes in our community have increased by approximately half a million dollars in the last year. So the levy percentage increase is spread out over a more inflated, if you will, tax base. So, that's a good thing. If we apply an eighteen point eight-three-five levy increase, what that means essentially is that we'll have a four point two-seven tax increase on the amount that you paid for the city of Crookston's taxes. Not the county's taxes, not the school district's taxes, not special assessments, but essentially, that's how much your taxes would go up. We did a calculation on a random three-hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, and the tax increase on that home was approximately seventy-six dollars. Now, again, those are estimates. Nothing is determined finally until we have our final levy amount that's set in December. What we are talking about tonight is what is our preliminary, a tax levy increase that we propose?
What would it be on, that was on a three?
That's on a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home.
Two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and that was four point?
Four point two-seven percent increase at the eighteen point eight-three level that department heads were able to achieve. Now, based on your actions earlier, I just did a rough calculation, that's about a four point seven-five percent increase on the amount of the levy, not amount of dollars, but of the levy. So that would put you at approximately, I'm gonna call it twenty-three point five percent. Now, I do wanna share with you, East Grand Forks is at nineteen percent, with the possibility of going to twenty-one, just as a means of comparison.
How about Thief River?
Thief River has not published theirs yet.
Okay.
So what about taking some out of the reserves to cover some of this?
Certainly a possibility. We have taken money out of reserves in the past. What I have suggested to department heads and to you in the past is, it seems financially appropriate and advisable that you fund one-time purchases from reserves. You can fund any type of expense with reserves, but if you fund ongoing expenses with reserves, not only do your reserves go down, but you don't earn any money on those reserves and lock yourself in almost to continuing that funding.
Have you guys identified those one-time purchases that are in some of these budgets that we can address?
We have identified some.
Okay.
We have not identified all that are possible, and I do wanna tell you, consistent with what you've expressed in the past, is we have attempted this year to make a budget that increases the salaries of our employees to hopefully reach at or near average or median when we compare ourselves to other cities of the same size. That has been our emphasis.
For all departments?
For all departments. Now, some departments are closer to the average than others, so they have not had as significant a proposed increase. Some are significantly, significantly below average of the cities which we selected for comparison. East Grand Forks, Thief River Falls, Montevideo, Grand Rapids are some of the cities that we, Virginia, that we selected based on populations, based on also type of economies within those cities, regionality, where they're located relative to us. We did not select what are often referred to as metro or urban cities. We tried to select greater Minnesota, outstate, however you wanna refer to it, cities. And Jordan was an immense help in gathering data for us. Ryan and I have spent considerable time trying to make this as easy to understand and give you a means of comparison because this is such a significant year. As I've told you, we have plugged in forty percent for utility costs, we can look at that. We have a little better data now than two months ago. We can look at some reserves for one-time expenditures, if that's your criteria, if that's what you want.
I, I, I like the idea of looking at the one-time expenses and, and then pulling them out of reserve, and using reserves for those one-time expenses, and then seeing what the, the levy number looks like then. Instead of, instead of just pulling a lump sum of, a lump number, say, how much do we have to pull from our reserves to get us to fifteen? I'd, I'd rather, I'd rather look at it as one-time purchases and, and then maybe possibly pulling them out of reserves rather than that. I mean, I, I mean, is there any, I mean, Steve and I have talked a little bit about the, the amount of reserves that we have on hand, and I tend to agree with what Steve is saying. We, we're a city that's operating, we're, not many cities are debt-free, right? I mean, like.
I would say it's less than not very many.
Right.
What would we say the percentage of our operating budget is right now that we have saved in reserves?
If I remember the auditor's report, it was in the eighty percentile. I believe she also told us that typical is twenty-five to forty percent in reserves relative to your operating budget. What I would like to see tonight is that we establish what we want our maximum levy to be, and we can work on the reserve question after that's settled with your input.
Because right now, we're, we're at, what, eighteen?
Well, originally, before your actions tonight, I would say that a conservative estimate now would be twenty-three percent with what you've assigned for additional expenditures tonight.
So, so the one thing I wanna try to avoid through all of this budget, and I mean, we put a lot of work into the, you know, going through the budgets, and then only, and it, and it's frustrating me a little bit, only get to the end and saying, you know, as council members, we want this, we want, we want this department to do this, we want this department to do that, then you get to the end and just say, well, that's too high, it doesn't feel good to me. I wanna, I wanna lower it to this, just because this number makes me feel better, it'll make me sleep better at night. So we're, we're at a point within our city, are we gonna continue to kick this can down the road and let our, 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 our equipment and our buildings continue to, to get in the shape that they're in, or, or do we start to take some action and, and, and do something about it? Yeah, that, that, and that action is a cost the community to, to, to upkeep on some of this stuff.
And a lot of that lies to Delain, it's, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't. I thought that we'd been looking at going through and checking our buildings, checking our equipment, and seeing, you know, what infrastructure, you know, kind of what do we need to go out and set the, the world straight in Crookston? And then possibly going out and bonding for that, or figuring out a way to, to take some surplus and some bonding or whatever, and get ourselves in a good shape so that, you know, it's one thing not to owe anybody anything, it's another thing if everything's falling apart.
Right.
We have had a building study done. Greg Heft and I have. We have had a building study done. Uh, Greg Heft and I have worked on that, and we did receive some preliminary information today. Uh, we've had to give them a little nudge to get that, and we told them we were budgeting. Uh, but we were told, I believe today, and correct me if I'm wrong, Greg, that we would receive a report by the end of this week. So we will have that. Um, and again, what I'm suggesting to you is, again, this is a preliminary levy. We can go down from that, but we can't go up.
Sure.
So I can tell you that there are things that we have already preliminarily identified as potentially funded from reserves. So if, if you were to set this at twenty-three, we can identify some items that can get that lower. I don't think there's a magical number that you can just point your fingers at and say it's gotta be X. What you have to convince yourselves of in this whole process, and we have to get that done by December twenty-eighth for our final, is that you think the citizens of Crookston are being well-served by the levy that you put on them. Um, and that does, if, if you were to set it at twenty-three or twenty-two, I can tell you, we can find some capital expenditures and maybe even some ongoing expenditures that can be funded by reserves, uh, to reduce that. I can't tell you what that number is, but I tell you, we, we can reduce it.
Corky, did you mention before, is that twenty-three point five? Is that what you had mentioned?
After addition of these numbers tonight, and that's what you've decided, that's great. It just pushes it up so that, um, and that may be the number you arrive at ultimately. Uh, I suspect not. I suspect that, um, with the work of our department heads, um, and Ryan, the financial director, myself, we can find some things that bring that down.
If you'd like to see the numbers of, you know, we've drawn off reserves before, so it's like, you look at the budget, okay, and we haven't had good numbers, so it may be skewed, but at the end of the day, over the last three, four years, where we've taken it out of reserves and the balance at that particular time, the following year, we're ahead of the game again, so we never really dropped in reserves. And, and you gotta look at that, and whether the numbers were.
So then, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think going back to what Delane was saying earlier, ultimately, at the end of the day, I think what we're worried about when we say kicking it down the road is that we've, we've cut out things that are needed or need to be maintained or things of that nature. And that, I think, is where we're worrisome is that if we're up, upping our, our tax levy and we're not addressing these things that are on fire or falling off walls or disintegrating or almost broken, right? So I think making sure that if we're going to do a, a higher tax rate, that we're addressing the issues that have been issues forever.
Well, I agree with, I agree with you, Christie. That's kind of on the lines of what I was gonna say, what they were talking about. This is where I think the reserve should be used.
Well, yeah.
Not, not just to lower it, because then you still have these things hanging out there and needed to be fixed or done.
Right.
But those are perfect spots for a reserve to come out of, instead of just to lower it to make, so to speak, us feel better or where we need to be.
And there's no question, council members, we can do that.
Yeah.
I just can't tell you.
Right now.
Hey, it's gonna be twelve or fourteen or without.
So I guess my, my question to you, Corky, is you've had the conversations with our department heads. You feel that what they've pulled out so far gets us to this twenty-three percent without being detrimental to our city? And that we, at a later time, if we agree today, twenty-three percent, knowing that there's a good possibility that we can pull from reserve from those one-time purchases or things of that nature, if that's where we're going. But I just want to make sure that we're just not repeating the same issue we've had every year where we keep not maintaining or addressing the issues that we've been having.
Yes, I can tell you, this is a unique year. One, because we received federal funding, ARPA funds, loss revenue funds that have allowed us to do a number of things. Most importantly, we're addressing some of the systemic difficulty that we've had with wages. We have had, uh, job openings posted for weeks with no applicants. We have had officers from our police department leave because of the type of situation they were in within our department. Not fully staffing. We have had employees of public works suggest they needed to leave because of our wage situation. So we have attempted, in this proposal, to address that very significant situation. I believe one council member said, we can have the best trucks in the world, but we don't have drivers, it doesn't do us any good. That's what we've attempted to do initially here. Um, again, preliminary, preliminarily only, we'd be at about twenty-three and a half percent.
So, you know, over the years, if I could, Your Honor, over the years, we've, we've always discussed our, our, uh, our net tax capacity. And, and when that goes up, you know, you almost have to go up with it in order, otherwise the taxes are going down for folks. So you got more people, say you're trying to get a million dollars out of a hundred people, that's the one number. And if you're trying to get a million dollars out of a hundred and twenty people, that number goes down. And that's what we don't look at. I, I think the way it's plotted out here, it's just about eleven percent that we could go up and not increase anybody's taxes.
It seems to me you have inside information. And I'm glad about that.
These are the questions that I asked, and that's, these are what I got.
Yes, and we talked to the same person you did.
Because I talked to him, I talked about it last year, and I couldn't get that through here, and that's why I went early.
At this point in time, if we had a eleven percent levy increase, there would be a net effect of no increased taxes that people would pay. And that, that is a direct function of tax capacity, values of your businesses, values of your homes. You can actually increase the levy and decrease taxes. It does not do that at twenty-three percent.
Right, but that's what we've been trying to do with getting these extra homes and having these abatements and, and helping with the downtown businesses and such. You're getting your net tax capacity to a bigger number. So it's just being spread out by more people.
Or increase value of the homes in which the same number of people live.
Right.
Again, I can't emphasize enough, distinguish, make a distinction between percent the levy goes up and percent that the taxes that citizens pay, they're different.
And remember, we're just dealing with Crookston.
Only, no school district, no county, no special assessments, it's only what Crookston pays.
So you're, you're looking for a number tonight, so I mean, based on what we did earlier tonight, I mean, I, I, I say we just run with the twenty-three now.
Twenty-three and a half.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
And then look at, look at what you can pay out of the budget currently with, 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 um, reserves.
And I can tell you, your department heads are up to that task.
Okay.
They're aware that it could be coming because even at eighteen percent that we figured originally, I had put them on notice that we would be meeting and in all likelihood being asked to search for, uh, items that we could pay with reserves.
So do you need a motion for that?
I think we just actually will have to pass that motion on, uh, next meeting, at the council meeting, on the, uh, uh, general consensus.
So you're just looking for consensus right now?
The consensus, because I'd like to come with one for you then, showing what we've done between now and next council meeting to get that reduced, knowing that if all else fails, we can have a preliminary levy certified at the county at twenty-three and a half and work from there. Or try to before next council meeting, see where we could maybe get it.
I'd like to see where you're, where you're getting your cuts and whatever, because like I said, that's, you know, if we were broke, I could see it, but we're, we're taxing the community and we're sitting with eighty-five percent of, something we should have thirty percent.
But that's part of the conversation that we can have next time, right?
We might go for that because.
So why can't we get to the point that, that at the end of the budget season, they say, okay, we have this much dollars left over from, from last year that we didn't use, why can't we automatically put that into?
Whatever the percentage would be for the levy.
I'd just like to see the numbers. Okay, this is what we pulled out of reserve for twenty-twenty-two. And this was the balance. At the end of the year, this is the balance of reserves because that numbers was up over and above where it was.
Right.
And we took eighty, or eight, it was eighty, ninety thousand?
What you're saying is we gotta.
Just the interest, whatever, it builds itself. We gotta remember that.
We got our reserves right now, but we don't really need to grow it at this point. We should.
No.
I don't want to be, you can't be funded relying on that, I get that, but at the end of the day, we can't tax the citizens when we're sitting with eighty, at eighty-some percent. It's just passe.
Yeah, I'd like to address that when we come back and talk about where we pull money to because like, if best practices are saying that we should be much lower than that, I'm so worried that at some point, this is gonna, the state's gonna look at what we have in reserves and wonder why they should be funding us. Because I'm sure cuts will be coming down the line, especially with recession talk and all, all goods being so much better, that we really need to be what best practices is saying. I mean, like, that was in the 101 training for elected officials, right?
And we can be, we can tell you, uh, if not next council meeting, between now and December, where those reserves are gonna be spent.
And at what percentage we will still be in reserves.
It's a clear directive that I'm getting, more than a consensus. We need to spend some of our reserves, one, because it's the right thing to do, two, because we have needs, and three, we want to make sure that we are following best practices. And best practice is not to have eighty percent in reserves. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Sounds good.
So the consensus is?
Twenty-three point five for now, preliminary, correct?
Yep. If nothing else happens, twenty-three point five. But department heads and I will be working with Ryan between now and next council meeting to come with a way to use reserves to get that down.
My, my question here is, is if we're gonna do a preliminary at twenty-three point five, and that's evidently nobody wants to be there, why are we starting at that number?
Just to give us a, right now, if nothing else happened, we'd be there, that's a preliminary.
But why do we even gotta make a recommendation? I'd rather see the stuff come to us and then it's like, okay, now I will say.
Because we don't want to put you behind the eight ball next Monday night because we have a deadline of September thirty.
Well, like I said, I just, you know, we got a lot of work to do in information before I'd even think about a twenty-three point five, I guess, in my own opinion, but.
But I, we're not agreeing to it. We're just saying we're not going any higher than that. And that there is definitely the ability to go a lot lower than that. But if this is what all the numbers are saying for now, let's start there and move down. That's all we're doing is identifying that number.
And as I get that, that's your directive, and we're gonna go find ways to do that, reduce you from twenty-three point five.
But I do see what Steve is saying is why rattle the jungle if you're, if you're not gonna have to. But I think it's prudent to do it just to set it up, telling them what it could possibly be, because this is how.
I would imagine everybody's phone it in tomorrow morning if they say, yeah, twenty-three point five sounds great, you know, I mean.
Nobody's agreeing, nobody's agreeing to twenty-three.
I'm not taking a vote on it tonight.
No, I'm just saying, it seems high to even start out at, you know, I'd say twenty percent and go down because I would hope we would get somewhere down below twenty percent, you know, I, I just think.
So do you just take out everything we just agreed upon then for the additional percentage?
Figure out something, I mean, if you look at it.
Saying that if we're planning on taking it out of, out of reserves, you could just as well tell them you're gonna do it now and drop the percentage down, but we don't.
No, like I said, we're not.
It's an arbitrary, so.
Flexibility among department heads to get there.
Yeah. This is not a final.
No.
Okay.
We good?
Good with that.
Yeah. Sounds good.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.